Almighty God, ruler of heaven and earth, we beseech thee to inspire and guide all our counsel and actions so that we may always walk in the path of justice, love and charity to one another. Help us with thy grace to do only those things that will promote the unity, happiness and prosperity of Nigeria. Amen. Gentlemen, you all welcome to our committee, Committee on Ethics, Privileges and Copyright Petition. I first of all want to apologize on behalf of all of us for the delay thus far. We'll just start now so that we won't keep you in further delay. My name is Senator Baristan Neda Iwase. I'm the chairman of this committee and I represent Addo South, Senatorial District of Addo State.
Thank you distinguished chairman. My respected colleagues, my name is Senator Baristan Abraham Karid. I represent Kadduna North, Senatorial District, the vice chairman of this committee.
The distinguished chairman, my distinguished colleague, invited guest. My name is Senator Dr. Tyd Wissam. I'm from Benewe North West Senatorial District and a member of this all important committee. Thank you very much.
As all senators that belong to this committee come in, they will individually be introduced to you. First of all, may I do a very short introduction? As you all may know, this is the second committee on Ethics, Privileges and Copyright Petition. We are not a court room and so the decorum here is that of a panel report. And we thank you for coming for answering to our call. Our main purpose here is resolution to find solution to whatever problem or issues that is plaguing our citizens. And hopefully with our cooperation, we will be able to achieve that purpose. I believe that both sides to the issue that have been invited here are ready seated. And we would start by calling on the first case that we have. But before that, may I give distinguished senator the opportunity to introduce ourselves to you?
Good afternoon chairman, vice chairman of the committee and ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dreti Kinkibe. I'm the senator representing the Federal Capital Territory and a member of this committee.
Thank you. And I have here the faces of Bishop Senator Augustin Unwaya and Mr. Benga Ashafa, Managing Director of Federal House and Authority on Federal Capital Territory. Are they here? Is the Federal House Authority here?
Yes sir.
Thank you sir. We have the C man, fireman Ewatu Flobert of Uluwak Dolafo versus Nigerian Navy. Are you here?
Yes sir.
Is the Nigerian Navy here?
It's chairman.
Thank you. Why don't you, excuse me, why don't you take your seats? No, no other people sit? Shouldn't you sit there? Um, we have NJ OBEZ Esquire on behalf of rights and democracy volunteer versus Nigerian National Petronal Corporation Limited. Do all incorporate it and the National Petronal Investment Management Services. Are these parties present?
Yes.
And what party are you representing?
NJ OBEZ Representing Rights and Democracy Volunteer.
Very good. Is the Nigerian National Petronal Corporation Limited present? What about the two oil company incorporated? What about the National Petronal Investment Management Services? May I also give my colleague who has just walked in the opportunity to introduce himself?
Thank you chairman. Right, thank you distinguished president. Our guest welcome. My name is Senator Anthony Siapriaro representing OBEZ, a member of this committee.
What about Uluwak Feni O N Alavisi Esquire and Tulu Afaye Omotosha Esquire? Are they here sir? Okay, you are behalf of President Trustee for Ethics and Values Development Initiative. Very well sir. What about Samsung Heavy Industries Nigeria and Nigerian Immigration Services? Is Samsung present? Yes chairman, they're here. Where are you? Samsung is present. What about the Nigerian immigration services? Alright, um, I'll start. I'll start with Bishop Senator Augustin Unwaya versus Mr. Benga Ashafa, Managing Director of Federal House and Authority on Federal Capital Development Authority. Effigy, Effigy here? Yes. Alright, we have a petition from Bishop Senator Augustin who's here. And they will give you the opportunity to tell us if that Unwaya is here so that you can have the opportunity to report if at all what he has to tell us. So Bishop please, you have a call. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Bishop please come.
Yes sir.
Thank you. Hello Mr. Chairman. Who is that? Oh that's, I will take it. Ah, Mr. Chairman, who is that? Okay, thank you.
Bishop Senator Augustin Unwaya, just so that I may swear that the evidence I shall give before this conversation the truth. You will be sure that nothing but the truth. So let me go.
Thank you very much. My name is Dr. Peter Goldman Shulay and legal practitioner and representing Mr. Benga Ashafa. Ashafa is sitting over here. And I wanted to draw your attention.
And I want, I want whatever you want to say. Please tell, tell to my Bishop.
I also want to have a letter, an order of whatever information I want to give. Absolutely, absolutely. It is not usual in our practice that lawyers will take oath before they represent their client.
Can you please raise your voice?
I said it is not usual in our practice as legal practitioners that the lawyer will first take, take an oath before he provides protection for his client. However, we took an oath when we woke up to the bar and I will not have a problem taking this oath again this afternoon. Thank you. I add your two big points show in there. Who solemnly swear, I am not giving evidence. So it's a big conversation.
And the evidence or the statement, whatever you are talking here.
That whatever representation I provide before the distinguished committee shall represent my oath as a legal practitioner post one of my oath taking of all my powers in the Nigerian bar and I shall perform my duty in truth and in full conscience and I apologize for the doubt. And thank you for the most of things.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I apologize for the confusion. This is something we are not used to.
No, I understand what you're saying. Because when you, when you come here to represent your client, your client is not here. We also want to be sure that your client, you have, you have the authority of client here. Is there anything on you authorization for your client or to indicate that you are here on behalf?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. City rightness to me is the GM and director of the legal department of the Federal House and Authority. And I think his, I think his appearance is the best authority that I would say I have. But aside from that.
Yes.
By instruction.
Thank you sir. Thank you Mr. Chairman. Is he also a lawyer?
Yes. Mr. Chairman sir, my name is Adlivi Jafar Kaurah. I'm the general manager, legal services and secretary to report Federal House and Authority. Managing director was invited to appear before this committee. However, he had authorized me to appear on behalf together with my other friend despite a letter he had sent to the honorable committee drawing its attention to the existence of this matter pending before High Courts of Justice in the FCT. However, due to the respect as a former legislator, the respect he has for this honorable Senate committee made him to direct the legal department heavily led by me to have the fact to appear before the committee. When from it and oh, out of the respect he has for the committee so as to draw its own attention to this fact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank, thank you very much. But I still want to ask something in this part that says you are here on behalf of the authorities of Mr. Shephane.
Thank you very much. In the light of that position, we therefore make a very humble application perhaps that we adjourn this specific matter to enable us to furnish you with the necessary documents with respect to our representation. We apologize for whatever inconvenience that refers to the occasion but within this message that we come at a point which is our fault. But I absolutely understand the position.
Alright, I understand that sir. Uh, alright, see the, like I, like I explained, as I expressed at the beginning, I said, this is not our court where we have it. And so there are certain procedures that, the hard rule procedures you have in courtrooms does not occur here. And so we are very flexible because the, the whole essence is to cut through the chase to try to get to justice there as we say. The further delay of this matter can actually create a situation where justice cannot be achieved. In other words, if there's a property that ought not to be encroached upon, if there is a property that ought not to be destroyed and by this incessant and continuing delay, whether in court or otherwise, and this property is not encroached upon or destroyed, justice will not be served. There will be injustice. And so that's what I'm seeing through the papers I have so far with me. If you want to address that, that's fine. But yes, I would like you, I'll give you a very short notice. I'll give you a very short notice to come back to address this matter. But this is something you must have at the back of your mind. Next day, I think the seventeenth?
It's Tuesday.
Fourteenth. Next week Tuesday. I'm going to be willing to give you that and I want you to please to come back with a letter for translation from the, from Mr. Shefa, Ashafa, authorizing you to represent him and then we can take it from there. Bishop, I understand that, I will understand how you feel right now on that matter because you want a judicial resolution to your matter. But we also don't want to rush to judgment. And so I will ask you to come again next city day, which is the fourth, fourteenth? This is the fourteenth, fourteenth of this month, which is next week Tuesday at the same venue.
Mr. Chairman, we are very grateful for our parts and we sincerely appreciate the accommodation. By the time we are here in this room, I give my word and assurance that all of this asking being will have been taken care of. And in terms of the fear expressed, we are fairly senior members of the bar and I can assure you sir, while we are here on the court, the rules certainly will be kept. I give my word of assurance.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, I appreciate this here we do the effort so far. Or really I have seen how you said in, in the fear, the fear I have, there are the many court orders to conduct for the past five, six, seven years now. Orders are noted and even the immigration fight question actually, who is, why have we shoot? It's not even here. And whatever they actually say here now, I'm not sure. The client is not here.
Alright Bishop, that's one of your point. I will understand that fear. The fact that it's not here, it's not really that relevant. He is fully represented and adequately represented. Whatever decision we reach here through that will also be applied then. So do not emphasize that fear, that's okay. So we adjourn this matter until next week Tuesday, which is the fourteenth of November twenty twenty three. You think permission? Yes.
Sir, the person said I have the lawyer who wants to make an evaluation for me or should I make an evaluation myself?
You have a lawyer here to represent you?
Yes sir.
Alright. So the, you applied?
Yes, we applied.
So please sit there and introduce yourself to the case.
I, Mr. Mike, for the jury. Due to this affair, that evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and not a met the truth. So let me go.
Uh, Esquire, thank you very much. What I was expecting is for you to introduce yourself and tell us affirmatively that you represent the facts. Um, because it's not evident.
I'm sorry, I'm Mike Olding. A Buddha based legal practitioner representing my client, Mr. Food Buy who was wrongfully dismissed by the Nigerian Navy.
Thank you sir. See why, you want to do this?
Yes. The chairman, my client Food Buy in the offside of the Smiths, two thousand and two hundred and one for Rangku Mount, illegal mountain of Roblo. Would you want to reform this committee, this distinguished committee that the dismissor was wrongful because the alleged offense was not committed? Alleged offense was not committed. He was apprehended by his colleagues who acted on hearsay that he was extorting money. That mountain, you know, he was extorting money from the road and every passerby. While we maintain that the dismissor was wrongful in that and alleged offense of extortion or illegal mountain of Roblo cannot first be carried out by law system. Two, the victim of the extortion was made confession as to that he is a victim. Secondly, he will be found with something, maybe they started money. They thought, they think he has started from the, the victim represented for them to know that truly he was, he was, he was extorting money or was mountain of Roblo. The alleged money from Roblo. For the days down case, my client here was caught, he wanted us, was wanted found with the item where he bought the buy. He brought some like a dust, he was on duty. After he was relieved, he went down to the village to get some food to feed. And while there standing, he saw the men of the Nigerian Navy. He even moved to them to breed it. They did that, they will give him a lift. He was distant apprehended. He was distant apprehended. When he asked, what is the problem? He said, they were told that his mountain is illegal and is Roblo. He was, they were told that his mountain, but they do catch it with anything to show that actually was extorting money from anybody. Answer is no. So it is on the light of this that this petition was filed to address this matter, to review it so that he can be stated because it was a lawful dismissal. So the exactly what happened in this case. The chairman, I got the exactly what happened in this case. I tell my guy exactly what happened in this case.
All right. Thank you. Uh, may I also, my colleague, opportunity to introduce himself?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished ladies. Our guests, Nasiru Sanazam and Dora, and the senator representing the Senator North. I would love to ask you to make a number of this call. Thank you.
I'm in the center. Thank you very much. Just talk of your, talk of the matter. Um, gentlemen of the Navy, I'm sure you've heard, um, what Mr. Who? Mr. Flubert got to say. What's your response to that?
Distinguished chairman, committee, Senate committee, elected representatives and public petitions, members of the committee, um, Royal Admiral Ayemagora, the Navy secretary, representing the chief of Navastar, who was invited to this committee. But due to other accidents of service who not come, so I'm here to present it. We have submitted our letter to the clerk. So like I said, we're here to respond to the invitation to a public hearing of the Senate committee, ethics, privileges and public petitions, in respect of a petition from Simon Farman Iwanto Flubert, Lord Odakor against the Nigerian Navy for alleged unlawful detention and dismissal of the Nigerian Navy. That he petition in respect of, uh, the retired Simon against Navy for alleged unlawful detention and dismissal of the service one to six, notably that he exonerated abandoned his duty post at Nigerian Navy ship Lugard, Lokoja, as well as mounted illegal roadblock extort money from motorists on the twenty sixth of August, two thousand and twenty one.
Uh, I'm sorry to put it wrong. I think I'll need to put that in so slightly.
I, Royal Admiral Ayemagora, do solemnly swear and affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing above the truth. So I think that.
Can you introduce something?
Like I said, sir, he he was, uh, he abandoned his duty post in a ship in the Lokoja, in the ship Lugard. He also mounted illegal roadblock to extort money from motorists on the twenty sixth of August, twenty twenty one. He was subsequently arrested and tried summarily on two counts, Chinese conduct to the prejudice of service discipline and offense in relation to sentry duties contrary to section one oh three one and section fifty one E of Armed Forces Act, cap eight twenty law definitions of Nigeria, two thousand and four. He was subsequently awarded dismissal from service on Camp One and twenty eight days imprisonment with hard labor on Camp Two. In view of their whole, and further directed to submit at a summary trial procedure was in conformity with external regulations of the Armed Forces of Nigeria. Accordingly, ex-rating's claims are clearly misleading and mysterious. In this wise, therefore, the Nigerian Navy has no rights or jurisdiction to entertain any redress as the case has been duly concluded. However, ex-rating can seek redress by appealing to the Superior Court as provided in the Armed Forces Act. But this, sir, I come to the end of my submissions. Thank you, distinguished chairman.
Thank you very much. Just talk of the, uh, I'm trying to understand. You said, uh, I heard you say it's retired or?
Was the Smiths from service?
The Smiths, okay. Uh, when you talk about higher courts, what, what do you mean?
Yeah, he was summarily, he was summarily tried, but if he feels that the punishment awarded to him is not appropriate, he can go to court, can appeal to an appropriate court.
Do you, do you consider this committee appropriate?
Uh, no, like you mentioned, distinguished chair, it's not a court. I just know that this is not a court.
Do you, do you consider that appropriate to listen, to take this session?
Definitely, that's why I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
That, that, I just wanted to clear that. Um, how, how long did this, uh, this gentleman work for the Navy?
I can, I don't know the exact number of years and months or days.
So do you, do you also have a record? Uh, how many infractions before this one that he has committed to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have records of those infractions?
We have records of those.
Have you submitted anything to this number two?
No, they're not part of this petition.
They were just asked if, if he had been found wanting, as an officer, before this act that brought you here in the service to the Navy.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
But you don't have any records of such for us.
No, but we are aware, but it's not the subject of this, uh, sum up today, Mr. Chairman, that's why we didn't say.
Or you, you only goes to prove one thing or another, right?
He wasn't, he wasn't charged for those offenses. I mean, the offenses that brought us here because he was caught mounting an illegal roadblock.
So I want to, I want to clear. Before that, before this event that brought us here, has this gentleman been tried or found wanting in cause of his duty to the Navy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I said.
And then I ask, do you have records of such?
We, we do have records.
You have records of such?
In fact, if, if I must take for, he, he was on a wall. He was deployed to our ship in Kachiya, Nigerian Navy School of Avant Technology. And he was on a wall, that means absent without leave for a year. He was away for one year from the Navy. He was marked run and declared a deserter while he was in Kachiya, but he was recalled back and imported to Lokoja and, uh, he was, he went to mount an illegal roadblock. And, Mr. Chairman, where the roadblock was mounted? About five kilometers from where he is supposed to keep duty. So he's not, as he went to eat, he, he was going to eat, we have just gone nearby. This place was five kilometers away. And so they had to, uh, on receipt of intelligence, the base dispatched a member to go and arrest him. And he was arrested, brought back to the base and tried according to our laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask whether you have the, the proceedings, the, the proceedings that lead to his dismissal. Do you have the proceedings?
I don't know, but we can, the proceedings are there because we're not just trying him, uh, without any evidence. The evidence is, and I'm like, should be with the base in Lokoja. If he appeals to a higher court, the Navy will provide the, for this evidence.
You see, that's all, you are all about talking to appeal him to a higher court. I don't understand what you mean by that. This is organized committee of the National Assembly. You really constitute it. And you have cause to be invited and you indeed appear before the committee. And if you are coming in to appear before this committee, you are supposed to come with all available proof that proper things have been done, not only a just written piece of paper. Sort of the things we, we expect you to cover normally are those record of proceedings so that you will be able to see what is there. And then even though we can always lay our hands to the, 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 I, I mean, that maybe those are what I view, that is for, for you at least to accompany them in this your your document so that at least it will be used as as something that we can lay our hands easily and make our findings at the end of the day with the presentation that you in the best interest of, of all parties.
Give a better response, sir. In his history, what is requested for are issues that have to be dealt with legally. He's asking to be reinstated in the Nigerian Navy. He's asking to be paid for the period that he had been served. These are issues that have to be determined by court. I don't know that the committee can direct his reabsorption by the Navy. Haven't committed offenses which are tried in accordance to the Armed Forces Act.
You see, just like we have said, if we don't have that power, we can have somebody. We do. And the best we can do in the circumstances is to prove to us that yes, what we have done was proper so that we will be able to justify your actions vis a vis the story complained before us. We have that power and we can do it. So the best, take yourself, I mean, make yourself available with all these documents so that at least we look at it and make a proper findings and we will reach it to the Senate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, distinguished ladies. Well, the man representing Navy uh, from your submission to this committee, it's very clear that you have no faith in this committee. You probably just came to tell us that we are not the right people to listen to this matter and that you have successfully stated your, the very way you remarked. And, uh, if you know the workings of the Parliament, the Parliament can invite even the chief of Navastar. Indeed, he's the one who should have been here. So for you to dismissively argue that the gentleman should have taken his case to go, go higher court, clearly demonstrates your lack of faith in this committee, even without, even allowing us to dig into this matter. So I'm afraid, I'm really afraid. I'm really afraid that you, as a senior level, can say a thing like that. If it were someone who is new in the service, you understand, I mean, at your level, I think you should have known that the Parliament is an organ of government with authority to invite every public servant to appear before her. So I want you to calm down and please deal with us in a manner that we will not be forced to deploy the power that we have. Please calm down from your eyes, sir. We have not been dug into the, this matter. You are creating, blockages here and there. We screened the chief of Navastar, he appeared before us. Does that send a message to you? We screened your house after he was appointed by Mr. President. So as a senator, I will not sit here and listen to any comment that sound like on a mining authority of the Senate. Please don't say that you did. Thank you very much.
I have a question. When you, he said he was away for three hours. When he was arrested, did you find a money on him, things that should not have been on him? Because if he mounted an illegal roadblock, then must, it must have been done for a reason. Maybe to collect money, extort money from people. Did they find money on him?
I mentioned, he was on duty. After he dismounted from his duty around, uh, zero three hundred hours in the morning, that's when he took off to the location where the roadblock was mounted. I think it's five kilometers away from the base. He is not authorized to mount a roadblock. And he did that alone with the aid of all the people, other civilians. They blocked the road, put wood and tires on the road, they mounted the roadblock. It's an illegal thing that he's not supposed to do. It's based on intelligence that he was arrested. So the, you're describing, the fact that he's mounting a roadblock is an offense on his own. Whether money was found on him or not, he was mounting an illegal roadblock. He's not supposed to be there.
You, you said, what, did he have a car, a motorcycle, a bicycle? You said the place was five kilometers away. Was he away for three hours? Did he walk to the place and back? I'm trying to determine that he was treated fairly. He said he wasn't treated. So some of these things will determine. If, say for instance, you tell me that I went somewhere without a car and I was there, mounted a roadblock, I did whatever I did, then walked back or in within a certain space of time that I think may be unlikely. And we are also just trying to get to the truth. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying dismissal unfairly, but I'm trying to determine how you knew that there was a roadblock there. Excuse me, was he really away for only three hours? And what were the things? I think everybody has a reason for doing things. And I want to determine if it's not for financial gain, what would be his reason for the, for the illegal roadblock? That's what I want to know.
It's definitely for financial gain because he was extorting money from motorists. But all the evidences, all these things are, the evidences are there. We could get them from a base in Lokoja. But we were invited to this committee and we thought that, uh, because if we have to go through the normal processes and procedures of presenting evidences and all that, I don't think the committee will have time for that. Now that's, uh, we feel the position of a law court to do. Like the distinguished chairman said, this is not a court. So it's just to settle it. But there are facts that he was extorting money. And it was also proven that he used a vehicle to where he mounted the roadblock. Like I said, it's five kilometers away, so he couldn't have walked there. He took a vehicle there, he mounted the roadblock. We got intelligence that he was doing this. And the base said, uh, there's no one bringing back and was arrested and tried. And during the trial, he put, I mean, guilty to all the charges and all that. So, but I just wanted to let the correct committee know that there is a procedure in the Armed Forces Act. If you are trying and you feel that you have been wrongly tried, you can seek redress. You can ask for redress and he did it, obeyed himself of that. So he, he didn't actually exhaust all the avenues to, to redress, I mean, for the issue to be redressed. Therefore, we feel that probably he will have done what he wants, he will have actually appealed. There's also room for appeal.
Within the Armed Forces.
Yeah, within the Armed Forces. If you're not happy with the judgment of a court, you appeal. That who felt that maybe if he goes to a higher court, he's not happy. You are just going to a higher court instead of delivering the committee with issues that could have been resolved at other meetings.
I want you to start going more there. But it would have been much easier if, when you were coming, he said he is listening legally, you had just come with maybe the, the record of proceedings that was from the, from the court martial or whatever and showed to us that see, 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 see all the evidence, all this could be necessary because of the documents we would read and just, just decide that no, he was dismissed. Because the documents we would read and just decide that no, you were dismissed accordingly.
I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think in the absence of requisite information that we require in order for us to at least reach a fair and balanced position on this issue. As the chairman, I think we should request it from the Navy Secretary to avail the committee with the necessary documents, especially the transcript to the processes which he was put through that you reached the position that you wish you dismissed. I think this will give a better idea of the workings of how those decisions were arrived at. As the chairman, that's my own suggestion.
Okay, just to, to clear this doubt from the Navy Secretary. I want you to believe and have it in your mind that we have the jurisdiction and the powers to do what we are doing now. So that you will not be mentioning all the pieces like our power, I mean, superior higher courts. I want you, I want you so that at least, even though you are here, out of respect and belief because the chairman earlier mentioned that this is not a court. What he means by this is not a court is that the proper procedures of the court will not be carried out here. But we have our own procedure of carrying out our responsibilities and functions so as we enable us to unveil the truth and then make appropriate findings and recommendations. That is it. So what I want is that I want you to believe that yes, this is a committee really constituted by the institution, by the National Assembly and indeed by the Senate to carry out these functions. And anything we ask, we are doing it properly, guided by the process as it is. So that what we will bring, you'll be able to bring those documents so that we can see. We're not going to do anything that, we're, we're, we're going to do what is right, absolutely right. If this gentleman is right, we'll be able to say you are wrong. If he is wrong, we'll be able to tell the world that you are wrong and that is all. We're not here to favor anybody. Though he brought in the petition, that does not mean that you will be given the opportunity or the overhang. So I want you to have it at the back of your mind that we are really consulted and then you submit yourself to, to this committee so that the proper thing will be done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes. The chair, the chairman and everyone now member of this committee must support you for their kind way of handling this matter. I don't want to just let this committee know very well that the young man sitting here was okay, was thus apprehended based on hearsay. There was no evidence as regards whether he was extracting money. It is information they got. And they got, and when they arrived, they say, they found him not here. And also got him apprehended, said clearly that if they were told that, they heard that he's mounted, they would move block or something. And if by block, you are trying to offense on, and of course, I can just play this, there's no provision in the Armed Forces Act that recognize the one mounted illegal roadblock. This is not known to law and it is trapped in law that offends what they know to law. And if you are charged in offense that's not known to law, you are bringing a different thing to those, to those handling their case so that you may succeed. It's short. First, the victim of this stuff must confess, must, something must be done. In fact, I'm saying that it must confess that I am the victim. And everything there's nobody, something like money or something that he has took from people, what he found in him. And then standing this young man was found, this key thing that he went for. And because of the information they got that he's mounting roadblock, they don't, they don't care to investigate. And this trailer that talking, I must tell this committee, this trailer talking. It was, they want one of the officers who got apprehended, he told him that if he just say yes, they will release him. And he just said it without asserting the application. So he was summarily tried and convicted. In fact, he sat five months in detention before he finally dismissed. So when we look at those factors, we feel no, this dismissal is the wrong thing, is illegal or something. So if you, if you meet this committee, the committee is having the position, the committee to review this, to review this matter and look at, we know the competency of this committee.
All right, that's okay. Thank you very much. Um, the gentleman who listened very patiently. And like I said before, we are not following the usual court proceedings. I'm aware for the five, for the possibility of five to do your application. It's, and I'm sorry, it's not a matter of, I don't know what I'm saying here. But I want to put that aside so that we don't go legalistic as it were. Because the, the main chairman of this committee, Ben O'Leary, and he's successfully detailed jobs. But I would like for you, as lead, to refer your mind to section sixty-two of the Constitution. Perhaps you can really very well may be able to tell what powers this committee has. Like my colleague might be told. Your boss came before us and asked him questions. He answered us honestly. If we were not satisfied with him, we would have known and the president would not appoint him. It's as simple as that. That's possibly the power that the Parliament has. His respect, his respect, he gets respect. That's the answer. Uh, as fulfilled by colleagues, we are going to give a shot. We're going to give a shot at John. When you are coming back, please, we need to see the proceedings of that court martial. We need to see the proceedings. We need to go through those proceedings to ensure that proper things were done and that his rights, his civil rights were not violated. Because this committee is people's committee and we're here to protect the rights of Nigerians. We are not here to support illegality. But where the law is on their side, we also support it. The allegation also says that he has, he was not paid for the period that was detained, not the period that he was dismissed. I don't know what period that is, but please check your records and let us know if actually he was paid or he was not. And every other relevant information, anything to help us to come to a decision, please, we need it. And so I will adjourn this hearing for you to come back again with the relevant information we just had and every other relevant information we take will help us to come to a conclusion. Is that understood by us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So we are just, uh, we will give two weeks, two weeks from today to appear before us again with the information we just requested. We gave two weeks going fully with that, there is the group processing and he said it was done in Lokhajar. Probably it's not in Lokhajar, you need to, you need to Lokhajar to give you this information. So that will give you two weeks. Please appeal us to this information when you come back again in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I thank you very much.
Thank you. But the
Distinguished chair, so listen, the, just looking at our schedule, we, we're scheduled for another here in the House of Reps on the same date, twenty-first of November. And I'm also representing the chief of Navastar.
We have, we have, we have case number three. Um, to Luwafemi, O N, Olabisi, E S Q. And to Luwabbe, Omotosho, E S Q. On behalf of registered trustees of ethics and values development initiatives and Samsung Heavy Industries, Nigerian Tech and Nigerian Immigration Services. Which parties are present? I'm sorry. Uh, which chairman?
The distinguished.
The distinguished chairman. We have registered trustees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is Samsung Heavy Industries here?
Yes.
Just thank you, Chairman, yes, we are.
But was, was the immigration services invited? So is immigration services, um, any presently from one hand? No? But you go right back. Go right back. Again, this is not true. And I will be faithful again. Um. Have you, have you said your? Aye. Allah bless you. Aye, Allah bless you, Uluwafemi. You solemnly affirm that every day of your representation I shall give for this distinguished property of this government shall be in my books. All of this and lots of other things. So I have no problem. Can I ask you a question?
I gave it for singles, just all my authority information I shall give before this, this time we committed shall be the truth, the whole truth. Nothing but the truth. It's never good.
All right, distinguished chairmen, please, with no respect, I'd like to introduce my colleague. From this, from representing Samsung, either legal counsel, please. And over to the, please.
Thank you, distinguished chairman, distinguished members of the committee. I mean, I think I, I have counsel to Samsung Heavy Industries. I confirm that I will provide my representation to these, uh, and what is my, uh, epices for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Where we get it? Distinguished chairman. We are here before this honourable committee this afternoon. I'm, I'm sorry for my judgment. I'm trying to adjust to the new environment. We do this more in the court, admire this use of the words. Mr. Chairman. Um, we represent the registered trustees of ethics and value development initiatives before this hearing. And the substance of the petition before this hearing is that our client received a petition from an head staff of Samsung Heavy Industries. And were shocked by the level of his material practices that they've been perpetrated by the Samsung Heavy Industries, a company registered by that Nigerian law. And we did a bit of our own digging and we have made available copies of some documents that give credence to the fact that, uh, we are not here, you know, on the legal. Basically, the, the head staff, who, who is a lawyer of over fifteen years at the back, started, she was one of the pioneer staff of Samsung Heavy Industries when it first started. Samsung Heavy Industries moved into Nigeria around twenty thirteen and by twenty fourteen, she was employed. And she has been in that, uh, employment till any this year when she was, uh, she was discharged. In fairness, we are not before this honourable court to, to make a case that there's no such thing behind this. We have audio recording of, of a foreign, uh, the, the head of, the head of, uh, HR of Samsung Industries clearly telling this Nigerian lawyer of over fifteen years at the back that this fellow Korea, that she's a Korean lawyer, that whatever instruction she gives, whatever legal opinion she gives, the Nigerian lawyer, she does accept it and sign it up. And that was the, 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 the beginning of our trouble. When she said, I know you can't bring somebody that I know by, you know, Nigerian law that she's not, she has not been caught to the Nigerian bar. She cannot practice law in Nigeria. And the company view that position as being confrontational and challenging the authority of the company. And that of all culminated into, you know, our termination of our employment. We we have clearly identified two issues, which is one, whether the Korean lawyer who was, according to, we have attacked her letter of employment. We have attacked her letter of employment when she was giving employment at the legal council. We have attacked her letter of employment when she was giving employment at a legal council to Samsung Industries. And also the separate, the immigration paper that brought her into Nigeria stated, you know, the capacity in which she was coming into Nigeria for as, as technical operations support service. And she's in Nigeria practicing law, doing solicitors job with Samsung Heavy Industries. Also, the head of HR, who the head of HR, who, the head of, thank you, sir. The head of HR, who, who ensured that this Nigerian lady, you know, lost her job. Also came in, I believe that was the main reason why the HR was insisted on getting her out of the system. The head of HR also, who is a, you know, for me, also came in as a technical, also came in as technical operations support service manager. But in actual, in actual sense, he is in that company, working as the head of HR. He's the one that determines, in fact, as a matter of fact, Nigerians, they have two separate rules for Nigerians and for foreigners. Nigeria are treated less than, for instance, on the, on the issue of signing into, into war. They have a separate margin for Nigerian to plot in. They have a separate margin for the foreigners who are even recently residents in the, in the, in the, in the company's, in the office premises. And Nigerians are, Nigerians are held to a higher standard of, of discipline compared to the foreigners. And basically, while in the process of getting justice for our, we did our best to also write, because we just don't want to just be chasing shadow. We also did our best, we wrote to the Nigerian Bar Association to even confirm the status of this foreign lawyer that did not even have any exceptional letter or permission from the Supreme Court to practice law in Nigeria. We wrote to the M B A, and the M B A did their own independent investigation, and they, they came up. In fact, they are pretty to Samsung Heavy Industries in respect of this matter. We have also unveiled this, this Allo Committee a copy of the letter written by them, we go to the chairman, asked them to, to stop and to cease from such illegality.
Uh, excuse me, let me stop. Um. I know this, what you say is very weighty and very heavy. But my colleague just got to my attention that this case is before a court. Please affirm to me or deny it, if this case is before a law court in Jor- anyway.
Indeed, this case is before the court.
All right, stop. I'm sorry, you should know that a case that is before any court, as such, we cannot, and we do not entertain it.
Ah.
And I have to stop. I'm told the case is for the court.
I, I want to respond, sir. Of the The, the, the case that is in court is different from what we have presented before this. Our petitions, we have, we have, like I said, we are going to split like two issues. We are, we are, we are not talking about the unlawful termination. We are, we are not asking for this or a distinguished hour to
Let, let me again. Let, let me, let me observe. We can split here. We will split here, the two here. The case is for the court, and we allow the court to decide on this matter. We will not take, we cannot take the court's decision and, and, and go with it. We understand that if you understand the situation, but please let the court decide. We will not take it outside. All right, and that, and that's the order of this committee.
Thank you so much, distinguished.